Listen, City Council, to order for the regular meeting, July 28, 2025, 6:00 PM, at the time and place as advertised, our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our pledge, the flag is up to our right.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council, and thank you others for reciting our pledge with us. Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council, excluding those scheduled for public hearing. As there may not be another opportunity to comment, once an agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor and in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Also, the City Council pledges to practice and promote ability within the governing body. We respect your views; we ask that you respect ours. So with that, I will open it up for any citizen comments. If you have comments tonight, please just give us your name and your city of residence. We don't need your physical address. And there's a microphone in the middle of the floor there. Welcome. And he says, yes, sir, please. Oh, no, just, just.
I'm gonna come up there.
No, I don't know. Will it work?
It'll work. Okay. Did you hear that now? Better than I can hear you.
All right.
Okay, thanks, welcome. We're here tonight to introduce an issue with Pat McCann cattle situation. I'm representing most of the residents. Oh, Dan Caldwell, 2909 Noel Crest Drive up there in that area. I'm representing most of the residents in Valley Vista addition right now. The past few months have been an air pollution almost everywhere, almost every night. There are state codes and regulations about livestock operations that are available. We'll talk about that. So we have a petition that was sent around, and it says we want a petition to stop the stink and have McCann cattle feed not removed from the city limits of Lewiston. Enough is enough. We, the undersigned, have had enough of increased assessments and property tax increases only to have our investments degraded by the constant smell and flies coming from that operation. Homes in this neighborhood are valued at over half to over a million dollars and beyond. His operation has reduced the saleability of this property and the inability to sit outside and enjoy the evening or open windows for fresh air because of the mess. We're penalized for even living there. The claim is that he's exempt because of agricultural status that's bogus. His tax base is minuscule in comparison. He didn't take care of his weeds and property taxes that he owned required by law. And we kind of demand that the city take action to see this operation cease. And we have a whole bunch of names here that I'm going to leave with you that have been signed the petition. And I want to talk a little bit briefly about some of these agricultural transition or zones. State code 3712, use permit outright. You can have general farming, but you can't have a feedlot. Okay, so then the definition of a feedlot comes in, and if you get anything under 300, it's considered not a feedlot, only because it's not pursued by the folks who look at those things. And so having more than a minimum of 100 animal units that accrue for more than 100 days, these animals are in there 24/7. They never leave. And they're just feeding and feeding. And the other side of it must be located at least a quarter mile or greater distance from any residential or incorporated city property. That's one of the codes. The other code is facilities containing under 300 head of cattle or confirming cattle for less than 45 days in a year are not covered with these facility types and inspected frequently. So it just kind of goes on and on. And then we get through the air quality aspects of air pollution, the presence in the outdoor atmosphere of one or more contaminants or combinations thereof of such quantities and such duration as they or may not tend to injure us to human plant life or property, or the mere interference with the comfortable enjoyment of that property. And that's where the issue is becoming a real problem. And I've got pictures here, I'll leave with you, of what the operation looks like, and the hay that's being hauled in there is looking for like, you know, a long-term situation. And this almost looks like an African thing where they're all down by the water hole. They're not even watering in a trough up there. They're just letting the water run down the side of the hill and into a pond down below. So anyway, we respect your time, and we like the idea that you think about some of this stuff, but it's really becoming a burden. People are all complaining, people have put their houses up for sale, and of course, they won't sell them in this kind of a condition. But anyway, it's an issue. And I've been up to the airport the other night, and I smelled it all at the airport. So it's around all the time.
Thank you.
Anyway, I thank you for your time, and I'll leave this with whoever the.
Just set them on the table right there, and I will grab them after the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further citizen comments?
Welcome, Mike. Yeah, Mike Florenz, 440 Noel Crest Court. I'm just kind of adding to what Dan said about McCann's stinking feedlot up there. I mean, considering that's zoned A2 transitional, and then the rules, it says general farming, you know, pasture ground, but it says except feedlots. Well, after, over the last four years, there've probably been about 400 semi-logs of hay coming in there. You can drive by there now, but I know none of you guys want to take the time to look at this mess. But, you know, it's just, you know, it's a blight on the neighborhood. And why should we have to put up with it? Because the City Council and that last rule we had for City Manager did absolutely nothing to address this problem. And it keeps getting worse. And why are we wasting perfectly good city water on this illegal stinking mess? You know, there's been dead cows down there. They shot a bull up there the other day to put it down. So what are you, discharging firearms in the city room? It's all right in this day and age. But I think we've just put up with about enough. And a couple of you city councilmen have been on there long enough when this first started, and you have done nothing about this. So I think it's time you guys get a backbone, because we certainly don't owe Pat McCann a damn thing. But he's just left that place, you know, it's just a mess, and you need to step up and do something about it. 60 days or 90 days, tell him to get his butt out there. I said, I don't know what kind of cattleman he is, but who in their right mind would leave those cattle out there on that bare hillside when he's got all that summer range up there around Winchester? So I think you guys either need to do something, or I don't know, we get hold of EPA and have them take care of it? Because obviously, none of you are interested. So I would say, you know, if you need to get your act together and get this thing done, because, you know, one, people are moving because they just can't stand it anymore. And who's going to buy that house if one look at that mess Pat McCann's created? Who in their right mind would want to live next door to that? I bought that house from Joe and Francis McCann back in the mid-'80s, and there is nothing there. And the only reason, and none of that's even original ground anymore, because it's all filled up a, when they built Brighton Canyon, it's steel and duff brought in there. Needs to be a gully next door to my house, and that's all filled there. That's not original ground anymore. So how you even get them that kind of exemption is beyond me. But, you know, it's not right, and you people need to get off your duff and do something about this, because this has gone on long enough.
Thank you, Mike. Welcome.
My name's William Stickler. I live at 622 Crest Lane Circle Drive, same area, Valley Vista. It is a cow problem. Right now, my thing is, what is this, all of this, what the cows are given out there, is it going down into our groundwater now, into our aquifer? Because, you know, the piles, piles of manure are six feet high. When the wind comes in, it blows it all the way up to me, and I'm right below the golf course. We can smell, we can't even sit on our decks because of it, because it stinks so bad, like candle in the windows. Okay? Then there's been several deaf cows, dead cows, out there. And these are from the people that I talked to that live right on the border there. They leave the cows dead out there. They wait for the coyotes to come in and eat them. And then when they're done with the carcasses, they throw them in the back of a flatbed and just leave them sit there, which is pollution to beat heck, you know? And so anyhow, so those are six foot high, those berms. Well, fire department had to go there the other day because they had spontaneous combustion, caught on fire. So what would happen if all, there must be 20, 30 ton of hay in there, caught on fire? Guess what's all we're surrounded by? Nothing but grass and weeds. So that catches fire, that neighborhood's gone. And, you know, like California, you can be all not proactive at all, just sit back and watch it happen. Oh, God, we should have done that, we should have done that. But no, no, it doesn't get done. And, but the stink in the neighborhood, the ones, the two people I talked to down there that are on the borderline, one has got their house for sale, gonna move, and that's one of the reasons you moved, because the fly crap on the back of their decks and underneath their patios is just solid black. There are so many flies up there now, we even get them up, way up above. And so they can't even let their grandkids go out in the yard and play because the flies are so bad. Plus, the other day, one of the other ones was telling me, says, called the neighborhood and says, are you raising cattle now? Cattle's are crossed out of their field up on the next road in their yard. And that's happened to these people, too. They come out in the yard, well, they weigh 1,000 pounds or more, they punch holes all over in your lawn and everything. This is not being taken care of right at all, and it doesn't belong in the middle of a city, because we probably pay up there over a million dollars in taxes up there with all the people that are there. You think that, you know, that's a big tax base for that little area. So, you know, it's, anyhow, that's my total, you know, I was tired of it. I've been living up there for 34 years. I built four houses there because I liked the neighborhood. But you can just see it declining, you know? It's a nice neighborhood, great view and everything. But somebody that's got money and power, I guess, just looks like another Yellowstone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further citizen comments? Hearing none. We'll move on to presentations. Item A, Business Expansion and Retention Bear Update. Valley Vision President and CEO Jerry Chavez will present findings from recent business expansion and retention, or also known as bear meetings, held with local manufacturers. Jerry, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of Lewiston City Council. It's always a pleasure to be in front of you. My name is Jerry, last name is Chavez, President and CEO of Valley Vision. Bear is an acronym. We'll start off with that. Bear is business retention and expansion. Part of our two-part program at Valley Vision, besides business attraction, bringing in businesses, we run a bear program. Many to go ahead and try to understand where local businesses, manufacturers, deal with them on a daily basis. The importance of that is those same issues that a Clearwater Paper or Vista Outdoors or somebody else like this would see daily, same things that are gonna, our new companies are going to experience. So we try to get ahead of it and try to correct the business climate here in the valley. With that being said, you have a condensed report. There is a expanded version of the report available upon request. But I'm going to go ahead and get to even more condensed report, if you will. Probably take about five times, five minutes of your. Here's why we pay attention to manufacturers. You look at ports that we pool and share with others, out of the 5,300 people that are employed in our manufacturing base, they produce about little over a billion dollars revenue here that circulates in the valley. If you do a rule of thumb for every dollar of private sector payroll, right, payroll from Clearwater Paper or the others, there's about a half a dollar that goes to support that in services, buying gas, buying cars, whatever the case may be. So that's about $1.5 billion. The next, next sector of any significance is government. That number in terms of employment is about 5,500. You look at the wages, wage differential between manufacturers and government, that's about $600 million. So that's why we pay attention to manufacturers. It's not that Valley Vision recruited all of those businesses, but we're responsible for adding more to that particular industrial base, because they have a higher wage and those dollars circulate a little bit better. So I'm not going to go over this. You know, the packet? We'll go over this. We run a bear program, and it's a survey, 77 questions that get to sit in front of these business owners and ask these questions, very open in terms of open-ended questions, and then we try to drill down and go into specifics. But, you know, the achievements for the last couple of years of our business base, significant national sales. You'll see a lot of our companies producing products going elsewhere, sometimes Russia, sometimes South America, and places not in and around the valley. That's new wealth coming into the area. Those parts and pieces that are sold to Russia and to China and to places outside Lewiston actually is new wealth coming into the area. Most significant, beyond that, the other thing that we ask is, in the next one to two to three to five years, are you planning to expand? Want to understand what that growth is going to look like, so we can chart when that growth occurs, we get an opportunity to help them. Maybe you have tax abatement policy here at Nesper's County, and that's one of the incentives that are available to manufacturers as they look at investing. And on the high end, you know, there's 10 out of the 17 companies that we interviewed, 10 of those companies are actually going to grow. That means more capital, more jobs, which is always good for the city. Workforce and workforce talent. We found in the conversation about workforce and workforce talent, a lot of our smaller businesses, manufacturers, they didn't understand that there is workforce dollars available to them to train their employees, nor did they understand what type of training was available, whether that was at the CT Center with LC State or Wal-Wal Community College, or even for our secondary students up at, at least. Regulatory strengths and weaknesses. Obviously, the strength is outdoors recreation, manufacturing experience. This community has a high level of the workforce in the manufacturing area. That number is probably about 13, 14%. Typically, that number for other communities is about eight to seven. It tells you we have a higher level of workers in that manufacturing space than most other communities. That's our ability to recruit other companies into the area. Little bit of a barrier to growth. Red tape, housing shortage, lack of reasonable price industrial land and workforce. So of those impacts to growth, had an opportunity to dive deeper into those conversations with developers, just try to understand what they meant by red tape. Since the report was finalized, had an opportunity to visit with Mayor Johnson and Community Development Director Shannon Grow to go into some very specifics. What do we need to do, some examples of those type of red tape or development issues? And as a result of that, we came up with, I want to say, five recommendations. Actually, three recommendations that we voiced in terms of how we need to fix some of the things specifically to Lewiston. I'll go over the recommendations, talk about key areas, and then I'll open for questions. So the recommendations of the city of Lewiston were, include property owners and all development related notes during a DRC or Development Review Committee meetings, not only to the develop, to the GC architect, GC general architect involved, but also to the owner of the building itself or the project. Implement a system of gathering satisfaction feedback on the development process from all applicants. There's a chance to ask those developers, what did you think about the process? Give us some examples of what worked well and what made, what didn't work as well. We're going to take a deeper dive into that survey, get into a little bit more specifics. I visited with Mayor Johnson as well as Shannon Grow and gave my opinion of what we needed. Both of them were very open to that. Develop proposed changes to the development process and circulate them. And then we have a meeting, I mean, and here, what type of development suggestions are being, being considered. You know, rather shoot out that information. You know, the city is well-versed in shooting out information. If there's a zone change, you send out that, that information to neighboring properties, so you alert them to zone change, similar tactic, if you will. So with regards to key recommendations across the valley, we're going to try to address workforce challenges by targeting training programs and tell those manufacturers that here's what's available in your community. Beyond that, take a look at technology infrastructure, broadband specific. How can we deploy broadband into other places within the valley where our businesses need that? Streamlining the regulatory process, we talked a little bit about that, and we're going to support, once again, this is very key. Our business community is saying that the city needs to invest in itself. Water, sewer and pipes, stormwater, to go and support businesses in development. Then we'll close by fostering communication, involvement and collaboration. So with that being said, it's a very condensed report, a little bit longer. It's available to you upon request. I just tried to give you one page of snapshot, and we have you in a more condensed report. Any questions?
Thank you, Jerry. Council members, questions for Director Chavez? Counselor Wright?
Thank you. On the feedback system for the development process, I'm actually surprised that doesn't exist. So we don't, we don't have a feedback loop for.
You do now.
We do now.
Tough to say. We're going to tweak that just a little bit.
Interesting. And when, when did that get put in place?
You have to ask the gatekeeper on that one. Yeah, Shannon's been very receptive to taking all the recommendations, visiting the mayor as well. So if you have any of those, those specifics, I think it's probably better asked of her than myself.
Gotcha, gotcha. Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselors, further questions? Comments for Director? Jerry, thank you for being with us here tonight. I have read the report, and I do have some questions, but I'm going to save them for staff to make sure that we're not missing something. But there's some obvious statements in here that I think we recognize, such as infrastructure development to facilitate business expansion. So we're trying, and we're going to keep trying to do that. And, you know, also try to be just as responsive as we can to our business partners in the community, you know? It doesn't mean we always get it right, but we want to make sure that we're doing the best we can, so appreciate it.
And they appreciate that. So I'd like to also, one, thank you as I walk out the door. Thank you for, most of you, if not all of you, are attending the Valley Vision Annual. It's actually the event and dinner, and tomorrow night, we are proud to have Lieutenant Governor Scott Bedkey there to give a keynote speech, and we have a special guest and special announcement for everybody here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Counselors, next up, we have 4B Financial Report for May 2025. Financial report in accordance with Idaho Code 50-208, that says no oral report, but we also have a financial report for June. So we're going to just jump ahead to Item C, Financial Report, June 2025, in accordance with Idaho Code 50-208. This is the oral report from our Finance Director, Amy Gordon. Amy, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council, Amy Gordon, City Treasurer. We're going to do things a little bit different tonight, rather than the same old, same old presentation I give quarterly on the financials. We're going to focus tonight on the Treasurers' Report. We're going to focus tonight on the treasurer's report. First, I want to draw council's attention to page three of the treasurer's report, and that's where the report will summarize all the funds that the city holds by financial institution. And if you look at the fifth column over the other total of over twenty-two million dollars, what that figure represents is our restricted funds. So I want to talk about that some tonight because often we'll hear from the public about the amount of money we're holding, and sometimes it's difficult for them to understand that there are some funds that we have to hold in restricted accounts that we aren't allowed to utilize. So kind of working backwards through the report, on page two, we have our police retirement fund and our perpetual care fund, and those are what we call fiduciary funds. Those are funds that are held and managed by a professional investment advisor, and those funds are in place for very specific purposes. I've got that cited here. Council has some additional information and just some of the budget documentation you were provided earlier this year that expands on this. But the police retirement fund, this is a single employer-to-find benefit pension plan that was in effect prior to law enforcement officers joining the Percy Plan. So this covers anybody who was employed as a police officer prior to the nineteen-eighties. It's still an active plan. We still have member beneficiaries in that plan, and so the plan will stay in existence as long as we have beneficiaries of the plan. It's governed by state code and the plan is defined within city ordinance, but it follows the laws as defined by state code. And then we also have our perpetual care fund, which is a fund where each time we sell space at the cemetery, a portion of that sale goes into this perpetual care fund, and that is to ensure to the purchaser of that plot or niche that their site will be maintained in perpetuity. And there again are restrictions on how the funds can be used. You can only take out of the account what has been earned on the contributions to the account. You can never touch those original contributions, so those are perpetually restricted. That's why we put them over in that other column because they're really not available for us to utilize in our operations. The utility funds, both water and wastewater, they have funds listed in that other column. And the, the accounts that are highlighted in yellow, those relate back to the bonds. So both water and wastewater have bonds in place. We had requirements to be compliant to the bond. They require us to have a reserve set aside for each bond. Those reserves have to be established in full by the tenth year of the bond. But we're working on establishing those each year. And then we also are required to have a debt service account. So each month we dedicate the portion of revenues related to, so each month we take part of our operating revenue and we transfer it into the debt service account. So every six months when it comes time to make that payment, the payment amount has already been set aside. It's how we match the revenue that we pledged for the bond to the liability of the bond. It's a requirement of the bond. Then nestled in between there, you'll see there are funds on account at Banner Bank, and those are the equity buy-in fees. I won't talk much about those because Dustin gave you a presentation during the capital project plan that included equity buy-in fees. He provided you the equity buy-in fee study, but those are fees that we collect that have a limited scope of how they can be used, so we don't include them in our other available So just taking a peek at the general fund, we have approximately one point three million of the funds that are considered restricted. Working from the top down, what is in, on deposit at Wells Fargo, that five hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars, that's the opioid funds. So as council's aware, there's really a limited use on how you can utilize those funds. So because of that, they are isolated out from other funds. Umpqua, that is the city's treasurer's trust account. It's where we put funds when we aren't the owner of the funds. So we might have a contractor who puts down a deposit, or we may have a developer who needs to put down, like a surety bond, they towards their projects. The traffic impact fees, if we collect traffic impact fees from a developer, they'll stay in this account until we've met the requirements of what those fees are to be used for, and at that point they get transferred into city funds to reimburse for a study or whatever those fees are dedicated towards. But until we've met the requirements of those funds even either becoming the city funds or the contractor, whoever we're holding funds on deposit for has, is eligible to have those funds reimbursed to them, they stay in this account. It's a non-interest-bearing account. It's isolated from all other city funds. So it kind of protects those funds that are being held on deposit until we've determined who gets the funds in the end. And then we are self-funded in regards to our unemployment claims, so we have a reserve established for that, and that is at Zion's Bank, and that's what the hundred forty-seven thousand is. Down below, I have an amount highlighted in blue for the workers' comp fund, and that is our claim funding account based off our contract with our third-party administrator. We have to maintain forty thousand in that account so they can write claim checks, and so we're constantly reimbursing that account, but we have to, that's our minimum balance that we have to maintain. Anyone have any questions at this point?
Members, questions for Director Gordon, Counselor Wright?
Yes, and if this is getting ahead or off the topic you want to be on at the moment, just let me know. But when I was going through the report, I see some of them sixty-nine percent of the budget used, other ones fifteen percent of the budget used. Should I be concerned when I see numbers like this or not?
No, I mean, this is my usual song and dance I give to councils. I go through all of that and I'll give you reasons why we might be trending ahead of budget or behind budget. At the end of June, you'd want to be no more than seventy-five percent of year-to-date budget because we'd be three-quarters of the way through the year. That's not always the case, though. We have, like in IT, they're usually trending, information systems and security, they're usually trending ahead of budget because our software contracts will renew at the beginning of the year, so they'll make those annual software agreement payments at the front of the year. Same with the risk management line item of the general fund. We pay our insurance premiums at the start of the year. We have, we pay the premium in whole, so you'll be at a hundred percent of your budget in month one. We do review these reports each month, myself and my staff, and we look for any anomalies there, and then we address any concerns that we might have with either the mayor or the department director. But we do look for that. You'll see like your capital projects, they'll sit at very low percentage of use up until late spring, summer, and then you'll see that ramp up. A lot of it's timing for seasonal projects, and then some of it is just the timing of when the payments occur. Property taxes, they won't, they'll show probably currently slightly over fifty percent collected rather than seventy-five percent collected because we get those payments in two installments, once in January and once in July.
Gotcha. And the, the transit one being over the budget percentage, that was some, I thought you explained that last time to do with the grant, but I wanted to be sure I'm remembering correctly.
Correct. If you see a line item that's over budget, it has likely got an amendment coming. So with transit, they had a project that was approved last year. It's the transit hub that they constructed down at the community center. That project carried forward into this year, and so until we go through the formal process of adopting the budget amendments, that's when it will correct itself.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I also wanted to point out, like in the general fund, if you, when you review this report, if you go by it fund by fund, the amount that the city has on deposit may help public, private citizens see it more reasonable. Like if you look at the general fund, we have thirteen point seven million in the account at the end of June. Well, if you back out the one point three that's restricted that we can't spend, and then within that, we also have that five million dollar assigned building fund to address some improvements to city buildings, and that leaves you about seven million, which for a ninety-day cash on hands, you'd want about eight to eight and a half million in there. That's the appropriate spot for ninety days cash on hand. So the general fund will dip below those ninety days cash throughout the year, and then when we get the property taxes, it brings us back up to above that ninety days. So the fund is working as designed, as we budgeted it, but we will have moments throughout the year where we fall below the ninety, then we'll get our next round of property taxes and we come up above the ninety. We'll drop down below ninety late this calendar year, and then we'll be back up to the ninety days after we get our property taxes in January. I also wanted to review the location of the funds. But we try to invest as much as we can in our local banks, so what we'll do is we'll put some of our reserves of each fund into CDs. And then, what the difference between Wells Fargo and the state treasurer's pool? They both pay relatively the same interest rate, so it's just a way to kind of diversify the funds, mitigate your risk. The state treasurer's pool, that is a professionally managed fund by the Idaho State Treasurer. They allow local governments to participate in that fund, so it's a easy way for us to invest funds and know that it's managed and protected, and we don't have to invest in a professional investment advisor or employ our own investment advisors. The state treasurer's pool is extremely liquid. You can request the funds today and have it tomorrow. So it is as liquid as what we have on account at Wells Fargo. The diversified bond fund is also managed by the state treasurer, but it is not as liquid, so you have to be really careful on how much funds you put in there. You want to make certain anything you have within that diversified bond fund isn't something you would need for an immediate or emergent need. So you could request the funds today, but I would have to wait for July to settle, and we won't receive our funds until the first week of August. So you have, got to be a little bit careful in what you put there. The money that we do have in the diversified bond fund, there's money from the general fund, represents about fifty percent of your ninety days. And then we also have our workers' comp. We have about one point seven million of our workers' comp fund, which represents where the actuaries have recommended our reserves be established. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Good. Director, counselors, questions, Counselor Wright?
Yeah. On the, the funds in Wells Fargo, so that's, that's a local branch, but not a local bank. Are they offering us something that our more local banks can't offer us?
So we actually don't deal with a local branch. We, our contacts are through a governmental banking unit that Wells Fargo has, so we work with that team of people. We haven't changed banking services in many years, but one of the things that we would do if we were to is we would look to see who's approved banks by the state of Idaho. The state goes out through, and they'll vet out bankings, and then they'll establish their approved banking list. So we always verify that we are using banks that are on that list for our primary banking needs. And Wells Fargo is one of those.
So if one of the local...
It's the state of Idaho's primary banks, and we're just piggybacking off that.
I got you. So if one of the local credit union, credit unions wanted to have a chance at an account like this, they would need to be on a list that Idaho has, am I understanding?
They would, but the Idaho State Code restricts how much you can have on deposit with credit unions. So we're limited on how much we can put in the credit unions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, other questions? Very good. Thank you, Amy. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you to your staff. You do a good job. Thank you. Counsel, next up, we have Roman number five, public hearings and related action items. Item A, public hearing for ZNC twenty-five dash one, accepting testimony on application by Steve Carlton, requesting a zone change from community commercial C-three zone and agricultural transitional F-two zone to general commercial C-four zone for seven point two four acre parcel at eight oh five Stewart Avenue. We have our assistant city planner with us here tonight, Ms. Katie Hollingshead. I will open the public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation from Ms. Hollingshead, then we'll accept testimony from the public if there is any. Also, as a reminder, no additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearings close. So that will be your time, counsel, to ask questions you may have with the public, the applicant, and your staff. If we do receive any public testimony, the applicant will have a chance to rebut that, and I will close the hearing. We will deliberate, discuss the relevant criteria standards, identify relevant facts and information, and then articulate detailed reasons for the proposed decision, discussion, amendment, sentence, any, and then we will vote on that. So with that, welcome. Katie, please introduce yourself for the record, and we will open the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Katie Hollingshead, assistant planner. Tonight, I am bringing in front of you an application by Steve Carlton. This is ZNC twenty-five dash one. This is a zone change application request to change a property from a split zone. It is half, was partially a community commercial C-three zone and partially agricultural transitional F-two zone. Mr. Carlton would like to rezone this property to our C-four general commercial zone. So like usual, we're going to look at some photos and some maps. So our subject property is loaded, located at eight oh five Stewart Ave at the intersection of Stewart Ave and Thane Road, and the property is approximately seven point two four acres of land. It contains the former KRLC Y-one oh five radio station and a large portion of vacant farmland. And so you can see the other property is outlined in red on my map with the hash marks. This is the same map with our zoning layer turned on. Like I said, and the property is split zone, so I did kind of draw a little jag into our subject property outline. And so that smaller portion down in the corner at the intersection of Stewart and Thane is that C-three. The larger portion is that F-two agricultural transitional zones, surrounding zones to that yellowish color that is to the east and kind of north is a planned unit development, so it's a mixed-use zone. And the bright green color is our R-two, a low-density residential zone. And then the bluish color that is kind of, as you go up Thane, is that C-three commercial But again, similar map, this one has our future land use layer put on it from our comprehensive plan. And so the subject property is in our community commercial designation in our comprehensive plan, which is that dark red color. And then you can see some of the other future uses kind of spread around it. So we have like the community residential, which is that yellow color and that brighter red. It's called corridor, but that's not what it is. It's also part of that community commercial designation. And then some photos of the site itself. So like I said, it is the former radio station building, and this is the adjacent parking lot. And this building will be removed by the applicant, and they had looked at repurposing it, but he decided that it's not really worth saving based on remodels that have happened in the past, and so he would prefer to start with a clean slate. So I'm at the corner of that intersection. You can see the pole for the pole sign that there, and I believe they just completed installing it. I did take these a couple of months ago when we did the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. And this is Thane grade, so you can see North Forty in the background, the Zion Bank. Viveting, you can see Hopper's Pizza and O'Reilly Auto Parts. It's diagonal across the intersection of Stewart and Thane. Viveting again, and there is kind of a little strip mall that is directly across the street from the subject property. It contains Man Mortgage, the USDA Service Center, and Anytime Fitness. And then this looks down Stewart where it dead ends, and you can see the single-family dwellings that are to... And you can see the single-family dwellings that are to the south, not really to the west, but kind of to the west also of the subject property. And like I said, Stewart, you can see from the sign, Stewart Avenue does end, dead end about 250 feet from the western edge of the subject property. And then just looking down again at that intersection, and then the vacant land portion of the property. Photos of that, because there's quite a bit of it. And so I stated in the staff report that's included in your packet, subject property is 7.24 acres. We're looking for a rezone to that general commercial C4 zone from its existing C3 and F2 zone. Some items I'd like to highlight from the staff report would be the uses that are allowed both by right and with conditional use in our C4 zone. They're very similar to those allowed in the C3 zone. I think the big thing that I pointed out to the Planning and Zoning Commission that they were specifically interested in is that that C4 zone does allow for residential uses on the second story of a building. So if Mr. Carlton was to build multi-story buildings, he would be able to do commercial uses on the ground floor and residential apartments on the upper stories. That sort of use would fall in line well with our comprehensive plan. That community commercial designation likes to provide a buffer from mid-to-high intensity commercial uses, kind of easing them into those lower-density residential uses that you have on that southwestern edge of the property across the street. Primary uses that are identified in the community commercial designation include retail, restaurant, personal services, office, commercial entertainment, flex spaces. Supporting uses would be things like residential or recreational, residential multi-unit, which is that second-story apartment use, mixed use, which falls in line with that again, storage units, transportation pillars, and institutions. As maybe not so much the council sees frequently, but our Planning and Zoning Commission does see frequently, we often have applicants come in front of the commission looking to do things that are a little more creative with their property. That could be things like conditional use for a second-story residential, conditional use for multifamily residential on the ground floor in a commercial zone, or things like this where they're looking to do more of a mixed use, which is what is allowed in that C4, but not allowed in the C3, which is what the adjacent properties are. Also called out in our comprehensive plan is kind of where uses like that should be located. And it specifically calls out that you want those things on either a collector or an arterial street. Stewart Avenue is a collector street, and Thane Grade is an arterial. So the location at the corner there is an appropriate one. It's also very close to one of our bus stops, which is a block away at Rock and Roll Realty, which is on Stewart, just across the street. I do have our applicant here. If the council has any questions for them, but otherwise I would stand for questions first.
Thank you, Katie. Counsel, do you have questions for Ms. Hollingshead? Okay, let's see if there's anyone from the public that would like to provide a comment on this. I don't see anyone.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman?
I think I read in here that possibly after construction, to sell it, is that the intent? Thought I read something there that said there's people been interested in this lot.
That would be a question for the applicant, not for me.
Do you want to mine?
Do you have any other questions for me before I sit down and let the applicant speak?
I have one.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yeah, so is that...
Counselor Wright?
I read in there about infrastructure, the developer taking on the cost of...
Yes, so anything that goes, so once it comes off of the street and goes into the property, so depending on how Mr. Carlton chooses to subdivide the property, because he would subdivide it, so it became multiple lots, anything to do with the road or the extension of the utilities, such as the water, the sewer, the Avista, that kind of stuff, that's all on the developer. The city doesn't, we don't do that work on private property.
Got you. Would we be doing the roads? Because it's a big chunk. I would think there's some roads that might need to be created.
The developer does the roads also, and then dedicates the back to the city as part of the plan.
Gotcha. Okay. That was all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Forsman?
Applicant.
Okay. Katie, I think we're done with you for now. Thank you. Underly? Steve, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Carlton Lewiston. We bought that piece a year or two ago, and we've had some interest on it. But you can't plan anything unless it's zoned right. So whatever somebody wants to do there is kind of out the window unless you have it zoned right. So we do plan to sell lots if you want to buy lots. Typically, we don't sell, we lease, but we've had some interest, people wanting to buy a lot. But like I said, you can't do anything until it's zoned right. So you can tell anybody what you want to go there, but until it's zoned right, you just can't make any plans. We can talk to people, but we'd like to put a road into there, a right-in, right-out type of deal off of Thane. That would make, there's some pretty nice view lots up there. We've had interest on offices, a little bit of everything. But you can't tell anybody, yeah, I'll sell you this or I'll do this, but until it's zoned right, you can't really make any plans. Or you can spend all the money you want drawing plans up, but it doesn't do any good.
Because the current zoning was very limited.
Very limited. We had a firm wanted to reuse the building, but we went in there and it's just been added on to. It's an old building, didn't really fit the use, didn't want to lease it long enough to make that pay. So, you know, I don't want to get stuck with a 10,000-square-foot office building in 10 years I can't rent. How to make it work.
Awesome. Thank you.
Counsel, further questions for the applicants? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, I will close the public hearing.
Excuse me, mayor. I don't believe we've had an opportunity for public comment on this particular matter.
Did ask, no one stood up.
I did ask for public comment. And nobody responded. That will check. Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, you have this before you.
So...
Counselor Wright?
See if I can get this right. Make a motion to direct staff to draft the reason statement approving ZNC 25-1.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Wright, second by Counselor Schroeder to direct staff to draft...
Enforcement.
Enforcement. I think enforcement. Pardon me, to draft the reason statement approving ZNC 25-1. Is there further discussion or amendments?
Mayor, in furtherance of this approval request, there is certain decision criteria and standards that relate. There has been a reason statement that was provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission in accordance with the motion to approve. Would the council like to adopt the prior findings? Or are there additional considerations that you are basing your decision on based on the various criteria and standards applicable to this application?
Counsel, you should have a copy of that. Reason statement of relevant criteria, it's on page 67 of 182. If you'd like, I can just pause here for a minute, allow you to pull that up on your laptop and/or your hard file, if you have it like my shelf. I did go through those earlier today and reviewed them. I didn't have any questions myself. Counselors, I'm going to ask you both, thank you, but speak up a little because we have an audience and we have folks at home listening, if you have some.
I didn't see any issues within our comprehensive plan, and it's in.
I approve them. Sorry, I can't understand.
Do we need to read this to a certain way, or do we just kind of all agree?
Well, it depends on what you ultimately want to do in approving or in directing staff to draft the reason statement. Would you like to do one that's consistent with the one that was previously adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission? Or do you want to add different reasonings on why you're approving this? So to clarify, under our, under the typical process, in order to approve it, the city council needs to make a determination that the proposed rezone is or is not in general conformance with the Lewiston comprehensive plan, that the subject property is or is not at least, or as well, at least as well-suited or is better suited for the proposed zoning district than the existing district. The proposed rezone does or does not present foreseen immedicable impacts of incompatible uses or development being located within the same vicinity. The effects of the proposed rezone are or are not anticipated to place undue burden upon the delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, including school districts. And the size, type, intensity, and density of development expected to occur on the subject property as a result of this rezoning is or is not suitable for the area and will or will not unduly burden the neighborhood, public infrastructure, and environmental resources.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, if you followed along, if you have it on your iPads or if you have hard copies of it, we're being asked to deliberate and discuss these criteria. And so I'm going to actually repeat those and ask you to state verbally your board or if you have any concerns on why it doesn't meet the criteria. So again, the person who has proposed rezone is in general conformance with Lewiston comprehensive plan. And there's a write-up below that. If you have questions, comments, concerns, please share those now. If you don't, then please, somebody tell me that you've reviewed it and you're in favor. It looks good.
I'm in favor. Looks good.
Thank you.
I'm in favor, and it looks good.
Thank you, counselors. Counselors, number two, the subject property is at least as well-suited or as better-suited for the proposed zoning district than the existing zoning district. Do you have any commentary on that?
I agree.
Better suited, yes.
Thank you, counsel. Number three, the proposed rezone does not present foreseen immedicable impact or incompatible uses or development being located in the same vicinity. Again, commentary, please, counsel.
I think it fits in with surrounding buildings. I agree.
I agree.
Number four, the effects of the proposed rezone are not anticipated to place undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, including school districts.
I agree. I agree.
I agree with that.
We have comments here from Lewiston Fire Department and others. Thank you. Number five, the size, type, intensity, and density of development expected to occur on the subject property as a result of this rezoning is suitable for the area and will not unduly burden the neighborhood, public infrastructure, or environmental resources. Any applicable commentary?
I believe that to be very suitable for the area and will not unduly burden the neighborhood.
Agree.
Thank you, counsel. Last, number six, the proposed rezone is in conformance with Idaho Code 67-6537, use of surface and groundwater. Applicable commentary? No testimony received on this from any political subdivisions. As a result, the commission determined there's no credible information to indicate that the proposed rezone would not be in conformance with this section of Idaho Code. Any commentary, counsel?
If it's in conformance with it, then we're fine, right? Use of surface and groundwater, it's applicable.
I would agree, based on what I've heard, this would be in conformance.
Counselor Wright, is there anything specific about what you heard today that would lead you to that conclusion?
That they're still going to have to go through the development process to do any type of building on this property.
So counsel, having reviewed these, then I'm going to assume that you've articulated your detailed reasons for this proposed decisions. And unless there's further questions or concerns expressed, I'm going to ask for those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Counsel, next up, we have number B, First Reading of Ordinance 4949, considering implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 25-1, declaring that certain real property be removed from the community commercial zone and agricultural transitional F2 zone to the general commercial C4 zone and amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
Motion to approve the First Reading of Ordinance number 4949.
It's been moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Council President Cleaver to approve the First Reading of Ordinance number 4949. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Clerk Brockie.
Approving the First Reading of Ordinance 4949, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 25-1, declaring that certain real property be removed from the community commercial C3 zone and agricultural transitional F2 zone to the general commercial C4 zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Brockie. Counsel, next we move to Roman numeral six, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the councilor's sole request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under Items Moved from the Consent Agenda.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I'd like to remove vouchers payable from the consent agenda.
Which one?
Vouchers payable. Into the active agenda.
Vouchers payable, okay. Vouchers payable will be removed, consent agenda, and placed under. Items moved from the consent agenda, Roman numeral number eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve the consented agenda as modified.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman to approve the consent agenda as modified. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is a roll call. My fault. We're going to redo this, folks. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Clerk Brockie, getting out of myself here. We'll move to Roman numeral seven, active agenda, item A. Also, the applicant for this commission withdrew, and so we will not take this up tonight. Instead, we will move to Roman numeral, pardon me, Alpha B, change order number two, TR zero-one-one two-zero-two-five Street Preservation Seal and Fog Coat IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-four, considering authorizing the mayor to sign change order number two in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-seventy-one dollars, oh, cents to Herco Inc. Incorporated, an increase in total contract amount to seven-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-twelve dollars and thirty-three cents. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder.
I move to approve change order number two for the twenty-twenty-five Street Preservation Seal and Fog Coat IFB dash twenty-five dash zero-one-four between Herco Inc. and the city of Lewiston and authorizing the mayor to execute the change order.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Council President Kleber to approve change order number two for the twenty-twenty-five Street Preservation Seal and Fog Coat for an IFB dash two-five dash zero-one-four imprint between Herco Inc. and the city of Lewiston, authorizing the mayor to execute the change order. Director Johnson, can I ask you a quick question on this? Welcome. Please introduce yourself to the record.
Public Works Director Destin Johnson.
Thank you, Director. Can you tell the council how much is remaining in the street preservation fund and any plans for the remaining balance on this?
I don't have the exact dollar amount, but we have enough funds because we're using that, those funds to reconstruct Fifth on the top of the Fifth Street grade there. So unfortunately, this was overrun just due to the addition of the streets, but it was a good bid and we were able to stretch our dollar a little bit further this year on our pavement preservation. So yeah, we're doing Fifth Street, which should start pretty soon.
Thank you, Director.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the reason for the change was due to not actually knowing exactly how much thickness and how bad the road was and so we needed to reestimate.
Yes. So when we do pavement preservation like that, we typically go out and you'll see we'll mark them with spray paint and then we'll take measurements of that. And we have to assume that the thickness and how bad it is, you just have to assume the thickness. And at some point, you know, the streets are not repairable. We just have to do a complete reconstruct. And so these streets in hindsight may have been better reconstructions, but you don't know it until you actually get in there and start doing the work. And so we usually try and build, put a little bit of cushion in there. The budget-wise, we do that, but you know, when we open the bids, we have to give them the quantity that they bid on. And these were, the pavement was actually twice as thick as we thought it was. And then the areas of, I don't want a technical term, of rottenness, the subgrade was, was bad, so we had to take out more than what we expected.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I think that's it. Clerk Brockie.
Council President Kleber.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Forstman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Director Johnson, Clerk Brockie. Item C, Compensation Review Committee Recommendation, considering the May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five recommendation from the Compensation Review Committee on the mayor and councilor salaries in accordance with Lewiston City Code two-dash-twelve-sub-B and two-dash-twenty-two-sub-B. This is an action item. Our finance director, Amy Gordon, is here with us tonight if you have questions. She was not at all at the meetings, but she may be able to answer a question possibly. But otherwise, counsel, you have this action before you and this one is going to be entirely on you. There is a copy of the report. I think it's a one-page report. There were some minutes.
We had two pages of minutes.
So with that, counsel, I'm going to just open it up for discussion.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
If I remember correctly, the way the committee, what they presented was going to be difficult with city code, correct? If I remember correctly?
Maybe, Jennifer, can I phone a friend here and maybe have you help set the council up so they understand what they're voting on?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Jennifer Tangano, city attorney. The proposal that was previously given, there is some difficulty with it relating to state code, requiring that every general election year, the city council set a fixed rate for councillor and mayor compensation. And so the way that the schedule was presented, it didn't quite set a fixed rate, but more of a scale. But you could potentially transition elements of that into a fixed compensation. And really what that means is you have to be able to say that for this particular year, compensation will be this specific amount. And then in this particular year, compensation will be that specific amount. You can't have percentage increases or varying amounts that depend on a variety of factors. You have to set the compensation at a set rate. So it has to be fixed, is what the language in the statute is.
And Mayor.
Counselor.
Just so I'm understanding, we then at this point can choose to lower, go higher or whatever and make a new amendment to this decision tonight?
Based on my understanding of what's being asked of you, there's a couple of options. You can reject the recommendation, you can, and just decline to accept any kind of increase. You can reject the recommendation as proposed and provide us a different pay scale. Or you could accept it. And if you accepted it, I would request that you modify it to create it in a more fixed manner and not necessarily a scaled amount.
Counsel President Kleber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So run this by real quick. Seventy-five days before the next election?
Yes, per statute, the ordinance approving any changes has to be passed seventy-five days prior to the general election, which that that date is August twenty-first of this year. However, an ordinance isn't effective until it's published. So typically, our ordinances get published on a Sunday, so that ordinance would have to be published no later than the twentieth of August, which based on the calendars, that Sunday is August seventeenth.
Okay, well, the reason why I asked, this potentially could be kind of a big deal. And we're missing a counselor tonight. And personally, I think it's important enough that everybody that's on this current council, those elected to serve, needs to be present to vote. And unfortunately, we're not all here. So I'm uncomfortable taking a vote on it tonight. I have no problem amending things and stating what perhaps we might want to vote on, but I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I'm willing to listen.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
So if I understand correctly, we've, we decided to, let's say, go in the direction of rewriting the code, right, and doing a different pay scale recommendation. That would then come to three readings still though, right? Or for Counselor Specklemeyer, who is not here, to then, if disagree, have his chance to share his opinions.
That really depends on the procedure you want to adopt for this. When passing an ordinance, traditionally, the statute says that you have to follow a particular process where you read the ordinance on three separate days at a, at a public meeting. What we traditionally do for our ordinances is we have a first reading and then on the second time, we waive the second reading and do a third reading by title only. And really, we do all of the readings by title only. And so we could potentially do it in two meetings. Another option is we do have the option to dispense with the rules and do all three readings on a single day and adopt it that day. We rarely do that. Usually, we do that when we're kind of behind on timelines or if it's a really important matter and we need to pass an ordinance right away. We'll do all three readings and passage on the same day. But traditionally, we do it spread over to council meetings where we, we modify the rules in accordance with statute.
So I guess to me, I think that that could be a good way to go. It also gives public another time to come out and express if they like the direction that we're thinking of going. Or I guess we could table it, but then we're just kind of getting tighter on their timeline this way I understand it.
And for the council's benefit, I would note that no ordinance has been drafted at this time, as there's been no direction from the city council on how to proceed. So we wouldn't even be before you to consider an ordinance until the next regular meeting of the city council, which is August eleventh, I believe. You have the option to talk about it more at your work session, which is August fourth.
Yeah, yeah. Even if we made a recommendation.
Even if you made a recommendation, yes. I don't know if the ordinance would be drafted by August fourth.
Right.
But obviously, this is a priority matter, so we would pop up the workload.
Yeah. I don't know. I know we talked about some big concerns, Mayor, sorry.
I'm sorry.
About with, we have a new election coming up and we have mayor seat open. This is a big one. There is nothing that dictates part-time versus full-time for a mayor. So we could have a mayor that comes in and doesn't put as many hours as maybe another mayor might. And our budget's tight as is with, and we're trying to be courteous to our taxpayers. And I think it might be worth looking into lowering the salary for the mayor and leaving, which then would be a part-time pay, and the mayor would be kind of the face of the city and direct the city administrator, I believe is the word I'm looking for, and possibly give room to hire a city administrator to be able to handle the day-to-days. And, but you know, that's also something that I feel like citizens might want to come and express on and, and see if they like that idea. But I definitely think it's something worth talking about. That's my opinion.
Mayor. Counselor Wright.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of leaning with what, what you're saying, Counselor, around waiting until Specklemeyer is here. If we can, you know, execute on that to be our upcoming working session, get through this in that working session, at least to give direction so an ordinance can be written up so we can have a place by the seventeenth due date, then that makes sense to me that everybody gets to weigh in.
Where we can start right now, based on some of the recommendations we received from the.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Review Committee. Want to make sure I'm quoting this correctly. So what they called, what they talked about was the newly-elected council members and council presidents would begin at step one of the scale. The, figure out what to do with the mayor. Well, I've got it right here. So Sue Brown moved to recommend a salary of one-oh-six-three-oh-three for the current mayor in FY twenty-six. Now, that would be assuming that our current mayor, Mayor Johnson, this would, a dollar amount would align with step four, step five of draft pay scale that Mr. Fickenworth created during the meeting, which is also on your chart. My opinion, if we're going to go to a, looking for a city administrator, which I think is, it's going to be needed regardless whether Mayor Johnson continues on or we get somebody else. It's, I think, Dan, I think you've done a great job and you've handled a lot over the last several years, but that was double duty. I think starting at one-oh-six might be a little bit rich, especially if we're going to be looking at, you know, potentially, we got to be real about this, people. We're going to look at a city, hiring a city administrator for a town this size, the budget we have and the projects that we have going on, the needs we have, and we're looking at one-hundred-and-forty thousand plus fringe. It's two-hundred thousand bucks. Where's the money coming from? That's going to be over and above. This is very important to remember. I mean, hope doesn't come cheap. So I'm going to say that and open my ears again and listen to what you have to say.
Counselor Wright, you're smiling. That's good.
So I, I mean, the only thing I, I would add, the city administrator, and I, I'm sympathetic to a difficult job and wanting, you know, somebody there to kind of help with a lot of the day-to-days. But I, I almost wonder, does it, are we, are we staying true to the strong mayor vote if, if we do something like that? That would be the only thing that would kind of cross my mind. And I don't, I don't know. I'd have to think through that.
I think really the big, Mayor.
Counsel, I think I, Council President Kleber first.
Oh, just follow up on your comment, Counselor Wright. No, I, I don't think it conflicts at all. I think, you know, having a city administrator, you know, back, of course, you know, I served on council with the city managers, basically told the city manager what we wanted and it was their job to enact what we were doing. This would be no different than having a strong mayor telling the city administrator, this is what council wants, this is what we're going to do and figure out how to get there. I will say this, you know, over the last couple of years, our former city manager, I can honestly say without his guidance, and you know, he was a trained professional, Alan Nygaard, without his guidance and perseverance, we wouldn't be sitting on a new water treatment plant or a wastewater treatment plant. No doubt in my mind, with those bonds passed with over eighty percent of acceptance. So you have a strong mayor like Mayor Johnson trying to pull off something like that, yet also doing day-to-day for the city is asking a lot.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
Yeah, I think the, I think, to me, the way I look at the separation between it is the management of our government is that the council chooses the manager and then they're the ones that decide whether they feel the manager is doing the they're the ones that decide whether they feel the manager is doing the job adequately or not. And I think the citizens felt that they wanted to be able to choose who is kind of running the city and they're in there the day-to-day, which is the strong form of government. And so, now they get to choose who gets to be in the seat of the council and get to be in the seat of the, kind of the city manager in a mayor form. But I also think that, I kind of echo Cleaver, Council Cleaver, that really the city administrator would just deal with the administrative duties, the little day-to-day task, while the mayor can then focus on maybe fighting for some bonds, going down to Boise and fighting our legislators on what the city needs and advocating for us. And I think it makes it really hard when the manager, when the manager, excuse me, the mayor is having to focus on those little tasks as well as then have their eyes on the bigger fish. And I think this would allow the hands to be able to kind of separate and assign tasks accordingly. And then mayor would still be, the citizens would still have a choice to choose if they don't like their mayor and take action. That's how I view the differences between the two.
Oh, you can go ahead. I've got a lot.
So, my opinion of the comprehensive review committee's plan, I, I don't agree with all the step increases, since we come back to this every two years anyways. It doesn't make sense to muddy the waters. That way, it does make sense to, a $20 increase to, or it doesn't, it's not going to build a road with that increase or replace pipes. But as far as the mayor's salary goes, I agree with Cassie over there that having, having some sort of thing set up, so depending on whether the, the mayor had an assistant, a city administrator or not, maybe splitting a salary, you know, whether, if they had a city administrator, maybe they could split whatever that salary was and we could put that into code. So, based on whatever the mayor decided to do once they got into office, but maybe tell us what the, what their salary would be, if they had an administrator or not.
Counselor Wright?
Can, can I ask Jennifer legally if we're, if we can structure something like that?
I better say yes to that question. You can ask her, I don't know if she'll...
So, could we, could we put together something where it's, it's still considered fixed? If we say, if you want an administrator and be part-time, here's your salary. If you don't want an administrator and be full-time, here's your salary. Is that still fixed?
Without giving legal advice, I would say it's not fixed at that point because it's an either-or situation and you have not set the specific rate for the mayor. You have if-this, then-that kind of scenarios. And so, it would raise the question about whether or not the council has actually set a fixed rate of compensation for the person in the mayor's role.
Thank you.
And then as far as what Council President Cleaver had mentioned about newly-elected council members and the council president, because it still has to be fixed based on the role, if the council wanted to entertain something different for the council president, I would recommend setting a specific amount for the mayor, a specific amount for the council president, and a specific amount for city councilors. But the longevity of the city counselor typically isn't a consideration when setting the rate.
Counselor President Cleaver?
So, if we decided to go off of this chart, that was recommended by a citizens committee, and we just said, all right, for a new mayor, they're going to start at step one, for an existing mayor, they will continue on at step, say, step four. And then as far as council member, council president, you know, those numbers can, you know, that's what it is come next November.
Again, I would point out that at that point, the compensation still isn't fixed because it's contingent upon certain circumstances being met. I would recommend that if you wanted, that to set the salary, you say for the mayor, the salary will be X amount. And just, and then if you wanted to increase it for the second year, you could say for fiscal year 2027, the salary for the mayor will be Y amount. And then if you wanted to set it again for the next fiscal year to cover that, that gap between the two, then you would say for, you know, fiscal year 2028, it would be Z amount.
Well, we can only approve things for a current term of a said city council. Couldn't really take it out to 2028.
As far as state statute, it does allow you to fix the rate for the, the time in between. The problem would be then if you didn't appropriate enough money for that compensation because when you approve it regardless, it's that amount until it's otherwise changed.
Okay. So, Counselor, if I heard Jennifer correctly, you could attract staff to draft an ordinance and make suggested changes to the Lewiston City Code. In other words, identify what those compensation levels would be for the council members, the council president, and the mayor. And then when you take that ordinance up, that draft ordinance up at maybe the next meeting, at the work session, if we can get it in, if not, the August 11th meeting, on Monday, you'd have an ordinance before you and then it would be real easy to make an amendment to that, say, well, I moved to approve this, but change the numbers to this. That might give us something to work with. Is that the same reasonable? Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor. We would just need direction on the amounts that you would want to set. And if you want to deviate currently, city code only identifies the mayor and city councilors. If you wanted to add a different rate for city council president, you could. And then if you wanted to adopt the recommendations provided from the Compensation Review Committee, if you wanted to do essentially an increasing amount, you could pick from one of those, but you have to designate the specific fiscal year that that would apply or the specific year that that would apply. Otherwise, you would just set one rate, period, and it would remain that rate until the council adopts a new rate.
I'm leaning toward just keep it simple, at least on the council member. I mean, I don't mind accepting their rates, the 720 and then 850, and find out what, if anything, we need to change for council president, who has additional roles to be paid at a higher rate. The, the steps seems complex to me and a lot of overhead. We can just increase it or decrease it if we want to the next time that it comes before us, rather than doing steps.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
And I mean, I will say, like, for industrial-type business, right, they would follow something similar to this, this type of salary increase. So, I think you could still, as a, if councils, upcoming councils wanted to continue to kind of use this as a guide every two years, they could. And I think that was kind of the idea of the, the committee review, is that they kind of have this already in place now and this is their ideas, so they're not always going back to the drawing board. So, I think you could still, like you said, use it where you're just saying, okay, this year, we're going to do this. But I don't think we could do it based on, obviously, how long you've been on council and that type, but you could follow the recommendations every, every time this comes up for review, if that makes sense. A guideline to follow.
Hey, Council, we need some direction. Council President Cleaver?
Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we draft an ordinance at the, for a new mayor, they would start at step one, which is 90,000. For a current mayor renewing, would start at step four at 101,969.60. Council member's salary would go to 720 a month. Council president's salary, I think 850 is probably a little rich, even though I'm the current president of the city council. You know, 800 seems reasonable. I don't want you guys thinking I'm staying up awake at night, working extra long hours, scratching my eyelids. I mean, I run meetings when the mayor's out of town.
You're not in the office when the mayor's out?
It's all fun. I've enjoyed it. So, that's my motion for the next year.
Council President, for a point of clarification, is there one of those numbers you would like to pick for the mayor's salary? Because if you have more than one number...
I did, I had step, I had step four, which is 101,969.60.
So, is that the rate you would like to set for next year? It has to be one rate. It can't be a contingent rate because otherwise, it's not fixed.
Well, then for next year, I guess my recommendation would be step one, 90,000. But should said mayor run for reelection and get reappointed, how would we address that, since he would certainly be worth more than the 90?
Well, regardless of whether the current mayor runs the next election cycle, you won't know until after this ordinance is passed whether or not they have been elected. So, you're going to have to choose an amount based on regardless of who assumes the role of mayor.
If I can add, I don't know if it's appropriate. After, because we reassess every two years, is my understanding. So, we could, if we thought, okay, we need to do catch-up money, increase it.
I need a second on the motion so we can discuss it, otherwise, I'm going to...
Sorry?
I'll second it.
Then, let me try to state this and then we can clean it up. Move by Council President Cleaver, second by Counselor Schroeder, to draft an ordinance to make changes to Lewiston City Code 2-12B and 2-22 sub-B, set the mayor's salary at 90,000, and change this. But the motion did include 101,969.60. Or if the current mayor runs again, gets elected, and then also council member's salary at 720, and then council president's salary at 850.
800.
800. Pardon me, I did change that. Okay, so with that now, we can discuss it. Counselor Wright, please.
Yep, so the idea was if scenario one, a new mayor gets elected and we had set it to 90,000, then in two years, when we review, we would maybe increase to step two or something like that. When we do the review anyway, not saying we're saying that in the process, we could just say, okay, now, this time, we want to change it to 93. Well, in scenario two, if a mayor gets reelected that's already been elected and we set it to 90,000, then in the two-year review, we could set it up to 101,000 or 106,000 to catch up for those years that we were only paying 90, if that makes sense. That is a way you can keep it fixed, but still do increases for those scenarios.
Well, the only reason I put down the 90 is we're, we're looking for one number. Correct?
That is correct, Council President.
Is this, Mayor, is this the thought that we'd still have room if a new mayor came in and decided they want to hire administrator? Do we feel like we would be able to financially pay $90,000 to a part-time mayor and an additional 100-plus to as an administrator?
Counselor, I think the answer to that is you're going to set this before you set your budget. So, during that budget process, if you have concerns about that, you could probably make adjustments to some of the budgets to take that into account.
I think, follow up, sorry. I, I guess my only, a little bit of concern is that, you know, there is nothing saying that you don't have to quit your, like, say you're working your full-time job and then you get elected as a mayor and now you're spending only 20% of your time at the city making $90,000 a year. I mean, I guess that's the risk that we take as citizens that vote, but I guess that's one concern I have with, with setting that bar higher. Whereas if you gave a little more room to someone that did want to run for mayor but knew they didn't have to do the day-to-day task, but they could be there for the citizens, might be a little more manageable, possibly leaving, I mean, more appealing to citizens to want to run in for that position because otherwise, probably my concern with that direction.
Counselors, further discussion? Let me restate the motion. I'm, I'm just accepting the editorial comments up here as a, as a motion to amend and it was approved by the secondar. But the motion again is to draft an ordinance to make changes to Lewiston City Code 2-12B and 2-22B, to change or to set the mayor's salary at $90,000. Mayor, council member's salary at $720 a year, and the council president's salary at $800 a year. That's the motion before you. Like a roll call on this, Jennifer, to draft an ordinance?
Yes, please.
Counsel, do you have any questions on what the motion is? Clerk Brocky, please cause, call the roll.
Council President Cleaver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
The council staff will draft an ordinance and Clerk Brocky, I think we can bring this back at the first meeting in August and try to make a decision on this. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, we can make an amendment to the agenda.
August 11th, that would give us time that we could get it published by the 17th.
I would hope so, Mayor. I'm sure the Lewiston Tribune has multiple days that they could potentially publish this, so if we need some, some workarounds, I do know that, my understanding is that the Tribune does not publish on Mondays, so we do have some leeway if we don't have it all done by the 17th, as long as we have it published before the 21st.
Thank you, Jennifer. So, Counsel, this ordinance will come back to you. You can review it. And if you'd like to make a motion to amend it, you can do it at that time, but maybe this gives you a little more time to prepare and then we hope that we have a full council that night. a little more time to prepare, and then we hope that we have a full council that night to discuss this. So counsel, next one, move to Roman number eight, items move from the consent agenda. This is an actual item. And Counselor Forstman, I will turn it over to you. You asked to have the vouchers payable removed from the consent agenda and placed down here.
So I just see for when there's travel for, like, on Info Systems, number 2767, Internet Custom Programming and Support, or no, I'm sorry, that's not right, Travel and Dury Tyler Connect 2025 is the title.
Which page number?
Oh, I don't follow that link. Hang on.
We have 12 pages of vouchers payable tonight.
I know, I was going by the number on the side, but I think it's a little hard to find that way. 15 out of my packet, but I don't have it by, or no, there's, you said there's 18 pages, right? So it should be page 15.
Page 15. Okay.
Okay, so Travel and Dury Tyler, has everybody seen that?
Info Systems.
I see it. Okay. My, just my question was, I see that there's a repeat of 3535, so I was just wondering, because it's the same person, so I didn't know if that was...
It's baggage, so you pay baggage for each leg of the trip, so to the destination and from the destination.
Okay, and I've seen that on some of, like, the lodging, where it has two numbers. Okay, here we go. So Travel Fire West Coast Leadership, 29924, and then 29924. Is that just, like, each night?
What page number?
Yeah, sorry, 14, right at the bottom.
I would guess those are registration fees. West Coast Leadership, to me, that sounds like the organization you'd pay the registration. So they likely had two attendees? Did you have to go to a...
Greg, Greg, Mayor Fire Chief, without looking at that specifically, it could have been two nights of a hotel, or it could have been two different people's rooms, or it could have been the registration. I can get back to you if you'd like.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure it wasn't like a mishap.
Yeah, it's not a double entry error. It's a repeat of, we had several people go to that conference.
Okay, okay. That was my, yeah, because that was kind of a red flag, but if it was several different people, then that's fine.
So we have a pretty extenuating process for travel, where they have to file a green sheet prior to travel. And so we go through and we vet out all the charges prior to traveling or issuing any travel checks. And then we also have pretty specific requirements on the requisitions, how they're entered, and so our purchasing department goes through, and they make certain that those requisitions are all entered appropriately, that they have allowable charges, and that those charges have all been approved on the green sheet. So it's a pretty extenuating process that we go through, because we do make the travel very restrictive and as conservative as possible.
Okay.
So we, we go through quite a vetting process before any charges occur, make certain it conforms to the policy.
Okay. And then I did have another one on page 16, Unify Identity License for Info Systems, $49. Do you know what that is?
I do not, but it's, it's an IT hardware, I think, that they use.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, are badges? Okay. It was just multiple of the same charge, so I was just trying to figure out what the, what that was. And then...
Counselor Forstman, in support of that, my understanding, having worked with ISS a lot on this, is that for every license, it's assigned to a specific user. And so in many instances, we have to purchase multiple licenses to allow for multiple users of the same system.
Okay. Like each badge person, like someone else?
I don't know, it's necessarily the badges, but for each user license. So like with Legal, we have a Westlaw subscription, and for every attorney that uses that subscription, we have to have a separate license.
Okay.
For ours specifically, we're able to group it, but some systems, like what ISS works with, they require individual licenses.
That makes sense. Thank you. And that was my last one. How about, thank you.
Clerk Counselor Klein?
I just had a comment. I thought it was, I thought it was comical that Pacific Steel and Recycling goes by Pacific Hide and Fur still in the, in the vouchers payable. They don't, I don't think they take hides anymore.
Counselor, those are good questions. And I think, Amy and our team, and really everyone who spends money for the city, does it. I think staff, myself included, are very conscious about would we spend city dollars. Certainly if we do something that, you know, maybe was not the best way to spend money, we want to be held accountable for that. But I feel pretty good that the system is working. Once in a while, we find some flat spots, and then we try to get them fixed, but appreciate the comments on that, because it can be confusing, it's a lot of information. So with that, Counselor Forstman, if you have no further questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Kleberg, second by Counselor Schroeder, to approve vouchers payable. Clerk Brockie?
Counselor President Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor's motion. As this next, we have Roman number nine, unfinished and new business. Item may city councilor comments, comments shall not be related to an item currently for the council or an item that may come before the council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Do we have council comments tonight?
Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
Just as a reminder, as Jerry came up and spoke, Valley Vision has their event tomorrow, and they're going to be announcing some exciting news. This is, I believe, the third year in a row that they've had this event and have been able to announce exciting news. And we are so far on track to hitting more people, we had more people this year than we did last year. I think the goal was 190, and we're, last I heard, was like close to 200. So that's good. And that is at...
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, at the, where am I speaking at?
Red line.
Well, the red line, not...
Whatever it is.
The new, the new but old red line. And again, it's Governor Scott Becky, and the sponsors for that was Clearwater, Clearwater River Casino and Lodge and Tri-State Health Center, so, yeah, I thought I'd share that. My other thing is I am out for a week. I will be gone from August 13th till the August 23rd. I will be gone on my yearly family vacation, and then I will be back at it as usual. I'll say it again as we get closer, but I will not be attending meetings within that week. Just a heads up.
Thank you, Counselor. Other council comments? Okay, city boards and commissions, do we have any updates tonight? Counselor, Council President Kleberg?
Yeah, just one. The Urbanial Agency is going to have a public hearing on their budget next week. Moved it up a week because apparently nobody's going to be there the following week, so it'll be on the 5th, City Hall.
Counselor comments? Counselor Klein?
I had an airport meeting. They're, they're working on the SEL land leases, there's going to be three of them, starting construction for it on August 1st, so they're really trying to push SELs, go-getter, getting things done fast. So the airport's been working with them to make sure it goes as smoothly as possible and there's no hiccups. So we're having another meeting tomorrow to get, work on the rest of the leases.
Yay.
Counselor Klein?
Mayor, I forgot an announcement. I heard Kleberg officially retired. So kudos to Kleberg and having some more time on his hands to be with us in meetings. So schedule more meetings, you know?
Fifty-four long years of working.
No, I just, in all seriousness, I want to say my congratulations to you. I know that's a...
Thank you.
It's a thing we look forward to, right, is retirement and have some more free time, but I'm sure you'll fill it with other things, so.
Yeah, just as long as everybody in here keeps working.
All right, Mayor comments? Counselor, my comments are maybe a little bit different tonight. You know, we have a lot of community heroes, and we don't see them sometimes, but recently I had the opportunity to meet a little four-year-old girl, and she was adopted by this young family in the valley here. And I have to tell you, she just, I don't know, she just blessed me, but really touched me in a special way. So I just want to say thank you to all of our parents, the community that are serving our community that way, and maybe foster care, or maybe they're adopting children, but it's just very special, and I was just very blessed and touched by that, so. Item D, agenda topics, counselors, anything go? If not, we're going to jump right down to Roman number 10, adjournment. We'll move...
Second.
Been moved by Council President Kleberg, second by Counselor Schroeder, to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.